Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the January 5th, 2016 Vista Planning Commission Meeting. Commissioner Garretson, will you lead us through the pledge, please?
May I begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Turley, will you take the call to roll, please?
Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Chairman Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Fleming.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Jackal. That's you. Sorry. Commissioner Rosler.
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Here.
Student Commissioner Rudabush. And Student Commissioner Acevedo. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, before you, you have the minutes from our December 15th, 2015 Planning Commission meetings. Are there any changes to those minutes? If none, can I have a motion, please? Commissioner Fleming?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Garretson?
I would second the motion.
Ms. Turley, may we vote? Please let the record show that the minutes from the December 15th, 2015 meeting passed with no changes. Thank you. Ms. Chow, are there... Any agenda changes this evening?
Good evening, Chairman Kramer. No changes tonight.
Thank you. All right. Before we begin our early design review, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda? I don't... If you did, you'd be required in the same fashion to fill out a speaker slip, but seeing none, we will proceed. Ms. Chow, can you lead us through item P-15-0858, please?
Certainly. Good evening, Chairman Kramer. Planning Commissioners, Patsy Chow, City Planner. The... First off, Happy New Year. The first item on the agenda end of the year is actually regarding our early design review for Vista Village Creekside. This particular proposal, it involves development of 41 apartment units on approximately 1.28-acre site that's located just south of the Wave Water Park. The site is currently found as being vacant. It's been previously padded graded. There are total four buildings that are being proposed. They are two- and three-story buildings combination. There will be also associated site improvements such as parking, passive and active recreation areas, private yard areas for the units. It is also adjacent to the Creekside Park, and I should point out that there is a separate parcel J, which is part of the project and would actually accommodate visitor parking as well as a lookout area. So taking a look at the project site parcels identified as 1, 2, which is the 1.28-acre site where the units, the 41 units would be located at, on. And then there's also parcel number 3, which is also known as parcel J across the creek, and that's where the visitor parking would be with the lookout area. It is part of the Vista Village Center, as you can see from this picture. Sinapolis is further to the northeast, Wave Water Park just to the north, and you have Fraser Farms and Crunch Fitness to the south across the private driveway. To the east immediately, you have residential units under the RM15 zone. Just a couple of photos, looking north at the project site at the padded areas, and then the one on the right is just looking east where the project site is on the left side, and then Fraser Farms is just immediately across the private driveway. As far as general plan, land use designation is identified as being mixed use, which allows up to 40 dwelling units per acre. It's basically all the purple area that it's identified on the slide. And then in terms of the zoning, it's SPI, which stands for Specific Plan Implementation Zone, which is part of the Downtown Vista specific plan. You also have park and recreation land use designation, which is where the Wave Water Park is located at. And then further to the east or to the right in yellow, it's the medium-high density zone at 15 dwelling units per acre. Specifics on the project is that the project, if moving forward, would be required to be processed under a site development plan permit along with landscape review. Total 41 apartment units, as mentioned previously, in four separate buildings, three-story maximum with a composition of four studios, 23 one-bedrooms, and 14 two-bedroom units at a proposed density of 32 dwelling units per acre where 40 is allowed maximum. As far as parking is concerned, per the Downtown specific plan, a total of 66 spaces would be required. The plans currently show 15 spaces on-site and nine spaces on that separate parcel J, which is part of the project, so that brings a total of 65. So there is a shortage of one space. However, the applicant, the architect, the developer is well aware that the required parking spaces would have to be met for the project. Just wanted to point out some information for the benefit of the Planning Commission is that the Vista Village Center has in place currently a reciprocal easement agreement that basically deals vehicular, pedestrian, and parking easements throughout the center. And so there is some provisions in the agreement that allows for use of certain parking spaces and certain common areas within certain city parcels throughout the different distribution of how the parcels need parking and how that can be shared amongst them. There is also a provision in the Downtown specific plan about an in-lug fee that allows multifamily projects, if so, if it is desired, to actually pay an in-lug fee up to 100% of the required guest parking. So these are just some factual, just some information out of the Downtown specific plan and the reciprocal easement agreement, just wanted to share with you, that would be related to this if they were so used. The conceptual site plan on the screen shows the configuration of the proposed project. Again, across the bridge, or the existing bridge to the north, there is the parcel where the nine visitor parking spaces would be located. There's an outlook area. And then the project site itself has the four proposed buildings, starting on the left, Building 1, 2, which houses actually the clubhouse, and then 3 and 4. Those are the Buildings 1, 3, and 4, three stories, and then the building 2, it's a two-story building. You also have the parking dispersed throughout the site, common open space in the form of passive and active recreation area. You have an outdoor living area or room. In the middle, in the center of the project site, there's a bocce ball terrace, several lookout areas and seating areas along with landscaping. In terms of the architecture, it is really a contemporary architectural style design, and these design elements that you see on the various buildings that are basically mimicking and basically duplicating some of the design elements from the Vista Village Center and also from Buena Vista Creek. There is use of the cornices with the creek and the water movement to imitate or to emulate the existing design themes that are utilized in the Vista Center, Vista Village Center. There are wood trellises, the decorative balconies with decorative guardrails, and heavy timber under as deck support, and also the use of roof metal, the metal roof material along with the exposed rafters. So that's kind of the types of materials that are used throughout the different elevations throughout the buildings. As far as the floor plans, you have the one on the left, which is the floor plan for Building 1. Buildings 3 and 4 are kind of mirror images of each other, and then Building 2, which houses the clubhouse, is on the right side. And you have full-size copies of the floor plans, so I'm just putting it here for, just for depiction purposes, for sake of discussion. So with that, staff is requesting that the Planning Commission provide comments and direction to the applicant related to this proposed design. As a reminder to the public and members in the audience, there is no formal vote tonight or any action on this item tonight. We're merely here to listen and collect comments and direction from the Planning Commission on the proposed request. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Chow, what is the building setback? Is there a particular...
Yes. There's... Per the Downtown specific plan, there are, there's a 15-foot setback which they're meeting, and, but they are meeting the current setbacks as specified in the Downtown specific plan.
Okay. Looks like Building 1 is encroaching, unless I'm reading the plan wrong. In the northwest corner.
At the northwest corner, towards the bridge, you mean?
Yes.
My understanding is that it is meeting, but I'll double-check on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Fleming?
Thank you. You had mentioned the parking, and I was a little confused in your description of the city shared parking some way. Maybe I misunderstood what you're trying to say there. Could you explain that a little more detail to me?
Sure. Sure, definitely. There is a reciprocal easement agreement that's in place that was amended in 2006 that basically addresses all the different parcels within Vista Village Center. From the original development, that is, when first was established, there are provisions in terms of vehicular easement access, pedestrian easement access throughout the site, and as well as parking. So there are certain parcels within certain phases within the project, within Vista Village, not just these two parcels or these three parcels, that allows one to utilize parking spaces within common areas within the center to be able to meet their parking requirements. So there are some provisions or some languages that allow one to do that. So I merely just wanted to bring that up because, one, the fact that right now, yes, there is a shortage of one parking space, which they are well aware of, the developer, but they will be meeting the 66. But on top of that, in addition to that, there are provisions in the reciprocal easement agreement that allow for more spaces to be basically utilized for different parcels throughout the project, in addition to being met on-site.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Rosler, please.
Patsy, what's the specific plan say about these two parcels of land? I know they're designated mixed use. It seems at one point, I remember Mr. Connelly saying that they were reserved for restaurant sites. And has the city's thinking on these two sites changed?
Yeah. The original plans, you are correct, were for restaurant pads originally as planned for, but it had been a long time, you know, waiting and waiting and waiting, and nothing has happened or had happened up to this date, and so therefore, the city decided to look in a different direction. The Downtown specific plan does allow for mixed use for residential, commercial, retail, including obviously restaurants, but yeah, unfortunately, it didn't work out, and a long time waiting for that to happen, but it didn't, so as far as the restaurants go.
Okay. All right. I think I'll save my rest of the questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackal, please.
Thank you. I had a question about the restaurants also, so thank you. Okay, for parking. So we're one parking space down now. Does that include, as part of the count, any ADA spaces that there may be?
It does. Right now, our code does not exclude or differentiate, so it's all part of the count as far as what's total required includes the handicap spaces.
And the only visitor parking is across the bridge?
Right now, they've labeled it as such, the nine spaces that are off to the north. But again, this is, that's why we're here tonight as far as where the spaces are located, but that's what they're showing right now is the nine visitor parking spaces on that parcel, on the smaller parcel.
So if you're coming to visit, you park there and schlep all the way across the bridge clear to the far end of the complex, unless you park in one of the other spaces?
Correct. Or maybe there's a reconfiguration where the visitor spaces are, maybe there's half on one side of the bridge and half on the other side, I'm not sure. But that would mean that some residents have to park on the other side, so that's part of the discussion, I think.
Okay, well, I just think that might need to be thought about some more. I'll wait for later. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney, please.
Thank you. Patsy, again, another couple of questions on parking.
Okay.
We've got five ADA spaces, and so if we take those five away from the 59, we're ending up with, you know, 54 spaces. The shared parking, I think, is going to be real important because what has been, do we have any findings on how many ADA spaces are occupied on some of the more recent structures that are similar in this? Because if they're vacant all the time...
That's true.
We're really shortchanging, I think, the residents of the building.
Yeah, that is...
Someone's having to do some walking.
Yeah, that's not something that we have looked at specifically as to how it's playing out out there in the real world when projects are built, but we are going to be updating our parking regulations soon. In fact, we're coming back, we're coming to you pretty soon with a discussion on that, and I think that's probably something that would be worthwhile to consider, at least as an avenue on how to account for or consider that a factor, because most of the time it might not be being utilized. So I know that that's a concern. But right now, we account for all of that being part of one total number, so...
Okay. Another question, not parking-related. On Building 1, on the south edge of, or the south side of Building 1, we have a trash enclosure?
Yes.
And it appears that the gates face the sidewalk. Is that intentional, or is that maybe an oversight? Because if I look, if I try to envision the trash being picked up, I would think it would be easier if the gates were on the drive side rather than having to move the containers across the sidewalk and into that other parking area. Do you see that area on the site?
I see that area, and I probably have to open up the plans because it's quite small. I realize that. We can actually ask the architect for explanation on that if you'd like when it comes up. They have actually a presentation, so when you'd like for that to happen, then we can bring that up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
Yes. Patsy, what has been the city discussion about this development basically surrounding or encompassing a public park in terms of how you control? I mean, I know this has video surveillance. I guess I just see a potential major conflict here between city use and the use of the residents. What has been the discussion on that?
As far as the use of Creekside Park itself and getting down there, part of, as part of this particular early design review, I don't think we have had much discussion in that regard as far as how we're gonna, you know, or what are the issues, or what could potentially be negatives or positives. I know that there are several points of access on how to get down there from a public standpoint, through the bridge and then down into behind, or right next to the outlook area, next to that little parcel J, but, and other points of access as well, or through the staircase, I guess, for that matter, through the project, but we have not discussed in detail as far as what the downs, I guess, or the upsides would be on that one, so...
Especially with the use of the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's going to be, it's a public access bridge.
Correct.
But yet, the residents would have to use that with visitors or have access to that property J. So I see that as a potential major conflict.
And we would, I'm sorry, we would make sure from a staff standpoint that that bridge remains public accessible, and then through the path on the, just to the west, I guess, at the westernmost portion of the project site, that that pathway continues to remain open for that purpose so that, so that there continuously is public access. So, but it's something to look at.
And there's sidewalks around the entire property that are public accessible.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal, please.
Thank you. I will follow that up. That was one of my concerns, too, I was going to bring up in the site design, but there, on these plans, it shows the existing park steps leading from, from the apartment development down into the creek walk, but it also shows and is labeled as a gated private access. So how does the public, say, on the Fraser Farm side, get down into the creek walk?
Yeah. Currently, based on the site plan, there's this portion right here that's accessible to the bridge, and then one would have to cross the bridge and get down into the creek area.
That's really hampering public access, I think.
Sure. And obviously, there is the staircase that you were mentioning, Commissioner Jackal, and obviously, if there's a desire, then obviously, again, we would have to bring this up as part of the discussion, how can it be maintained or improved for purposes of public access, but definitely, that's a point of discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there someone from Silvergate that's going to give us a presentation?
Yes, they are here.
Happy New Year. My name's Jim Reynolds. I'm the developer, partner of Silvergate, and here representing Pathfinder and Silvergate. The architect here is Benson &amp; Bowles. We're going to introduce them here shortly. The landscape architect is Land Lab, who you're familiar with, and civil engineer is Michael Baker, and they're here to answer any questions you might have. A little background, the key, the designers here, Benson &amp; Bowles, were the architects and prepared the original Vista Village master plan, and there were the designers of the Main Street, and there are also the Fraser Farms and these pads themselves. So they had, they're very familiar with the Vista Village plan and the history and intent of that. So as a result, Creekside Architectural Building, the elements will all relate to the existing center, and as you'll see, they do. A little site background, we just talked about, it was originally designed as a restaurant pads, and it failed to lease due to lack of visibility and remote proximity to the Vista Village Drive. The original design provided 49 onsite parking spaces plus 113 offsite parking places adjacent to the parking lots per a shared parking agreement, and that's what you were talking about just a little while ago. When we put the property in escrow, we came to the city and shared our vision for this apartment building, and as a result, I think Vista Creekside, the name of the project, provides a smart-growth housing element located within walkable Vista Village Shopping and Entertainment Center. Logical, smart-growth thing. The final project design will meet the city parking requirements as outlined in the specific plan. And with that, I'm going to introduce Richard Benson, the architect with Benson &amp; Bowles. Come on up, Richard.
First off, I want to say I'm very proud of my involvement in the original Vista Village development, and I think it's a great opportunity, some 18 years after we started working on it, to have an opportunity to finish it off. So I am extremely excited about it, and I think we can make this, this work as a smart-growth This is the, I think the other point I want to make is that, I'm going to go through this a little quicker than I thought. I hadn't seen Patsy's full presentation, so she's covered things. I'll try to hit the highlights as I go through this. But one thing that I will do is mention some things that I think might have been missed. The specific plan area, the Downtown specific plan area, we encompass all of the West Gateway portion of that. And if you look at the map there, we are in proximity to the Transit Center, we're within a quarter-mile walk of that, which makes this an excellent opportunity for a TOD or transit-oriented development. So that was something we were very excited about as well, and we were excited about it when Vista Village Incorporated that. We were involved in the design of the Sprint Center at that time, too. So this was the original plan, and you'll recognize that there are some differences, but most of the key elements are still in place. The objective was to extend downtown and in fact, create more of a downtown experience as you came through from Main Street into Vista Village. And then we have, right in the heart of it, the creek and the water park, which is a very unique feature for a entertainment and shopping center. And right along the creek there, you'll see in this, because you didn't see it in our plan, the location of the original restaurants that were suggested to surround the creek. And as Jim said, it didn't really work out because we have all these other restaurant opportunities on Vista Village Drive, and you know how retailers and restaurateurs are, they want the visibility first. So it, 15 years after the rest of the center was developed, it still sat there as dirt. Another thing that I think is interesting in this exhibit is to see what it looked like before, because Broadway went straight through there. There was a concrete V-channel, and now we've got that beautiful park that was put together in large part by Rob Gerke and his group at what was RBF is now Michael Baker. So we worked with them on that as well, so... But as I said, it sat vacant for many years, and we just had to come up with something that made some sense, and the introduction of residential seems like a very logical thing adjacent to this park. You can see in this picture, too, the proximity of pieces around it. I would like to point out the triangular parking area that's to the left of the image, which is seldom used at all right now. And the, again, the parking was always intended to extend beyond the boundaries of the two pads that the larger restaurants are on, and I think that's just something that will be worked out. So why this is a great smart-growth opportunity is it has all these attributes. We will now have a mix of land uses, we've got a compact building design, a very walkable community, a strong sense of place. We're going to be preserving open space elsewhere by using a site that already has its infrastructure in place, and then we've got the great opportunity to make this a TOD or a transit-oriented center. So I won't spend too much time on this again, you'll have some specific questions on the site plan, but we're still looking at the remote parcel here and how that gets utilized, but we know we can meet the city standards for the parking, in particular, if we take into account remote parking areas, and we'll have to work those sort of things out. But just a few other images, this is a section, site section, cut through the building, and then shows the relationship to the creek. There's a retaining wall on one side. These are walk-up units, so you walk up to flats on three levels. There's tuck-under garages and covered parking out in front, and all of the units orient toward the park. And this is a view from the park, looking at the park retaining wall and how the building, you know, fits in with, in fact, the shape of the perimeter really helps with the design of the building and the site because it allows opportunities for landscape to come up onto the site and extend into it, so it's an extension of the park. This is from the opposite side, and then I just wanted to point out some of the imagery that we were using, some of the creek-themed architectural elements that we've tied into the center, such as the wave element that repeats itself. We've got a lot of creek themes that went through Vista Village, and if you walk through it carefully, you'll see them all over the place. These are some of them, the wave rails, we're going to be using those same wave rails, we're going to be incorporating stone, we're going to be using some of the materials that are directly adjacent at the Fraser Farms with the heavy timbers, with the dark stain on them, and I think it's going to be a beautiful mix. And I think it's going to be a beautiful mix. We like to put some unique details into every project, too. And that's a part of the placemaking efforts that we're making. And all of this is going to feel very unique to Vista. You won't see it anyplace else. So we're proud of that. And little tricks like the supports on the balconies that are on the opposite side, the lower image there, are Vista Village, so VV rather than just straight things. So things like that are fun to do, and I think they make Vista more special. And just finally, there are some images, 3D images, that are in progress still. This one shows in particular the trellis element in the stone that is right in the center and faces the, actually helps screen the service area across the way, both visually and acoustically. But that is the location of the clubhouse within. Couple more images. And this one is from the bridge as you cross. And you can see it's actually pretty close, so we can distribute the parking as we go. And we know there are, by the way, the mistake on the being one shy was my fault. That there are required .25 spaces for every unit. And we went to 10.25, and I rounded down instead of up. So, but we can fix that. So we think this is a wonderful opportunity. It's an opportunity to introduce residential to a retail space. That's something that was done in the past in traditional downtowns. And it's an opportunity to do it here at Vista, and we think that it's a great opportunity. So I'll be available for questions, as will Neil Hadley from LandLab, the landscape architect, and Rob Gerke, the civil engineer.
Mr. Bowles, you used the term a couple of times, "smart growth."
Yes.
Can you tell me again what that means? And will these be market value apartments, or?
The market rate apartments, as I understand it, yes, they will be.
Okay.
Smart growth is utilizing, rather than greenfields, you know, which is chasing coyotes off the land and scraping it and so forth. It's utilizing sites that are already developed. And there are other things about that, too. A lot of them actually hearken back to more traditional town experiences, where you can, you know, walk downstairs and go get your coffee, or you can go across the street to Fraser Farms, do your shopping, and come back to the house or your home. That's what smart growth is about. And it's a real movement now. It used to be the norm. But now architects and planners and designers are looking at opportunities for what they call smart growth in gray field rather than greenfield locations. So if that helps a little bit. Those key points I had in the slide, too, also tell you what those attributes are.
Have you done this kind of development before?
Yes, yes, we have. We've done it as far north as Coeur d'Alene, Idaho.
What do you find, how do I say this? Do you find that the tenants actually, they may have less cars? Do they do, do they have the, you know, the normal, you know, three people, three cars? But they'll be using, they'll be walking to the local?
Yes, that is the experience. And I think it's been proven. And the other aspect of this is that you've got the Transit Center so close, too. So all of those things, you add them up, it's like a perfect opportunity, I think, in this location.
Okay, I've got some speakers for you. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Two things right now. I'm looking at parking spaces nine and 10 at Building One. They're the two by themselves west of the trash enclosure.
Do you want me to go back to the site?
Yeah, if you're not familiar, if you don't remember which ones nine and 10 are, then take a look. So it's directly south of the west end of Building One, those two spaces.
Right, right.
Are they, it looks a little problematic for them getting out of those spaces. There's really nowhere to get turned around. Are you envisioning them being able to turn around on that 24 feet?
We're going to have to work that out. Somebody already pointed out the location of the trash area there. That does need some finessing, if you will. And I think there's an opportunity with that. We've actually pulled that back a little bit. So if you were to back a car out of one of those spaces, you'd have an extra three feet or so by the time you got the car back. But that needs to be refined somewhat. It is a tight opportunity and a dead end. And that's also the reason we were looking at having the doors open out rather than in. If you notice on the other side, we've got an inlet and an outlet, so cars can come through and out, as can trash trucks and so forth. This is still a conceptual design, and we need to talk to the trash company and so forth.
Yeah, because I, I just, when I saw the doors on the south side of the trash enclosure, I was just assuming it was because the trash truck wasn't going to want to drive down that turn and private drive and then back out of it.
That's a good part of the reason we did it that way. And we recognize that there are further refinements that need to be made to make sure that works with those parking spaces at the end.
Okay, the second item I want to bring up is this, it's already been mentioned, is this access to the, kind of the center creek step area. Do you or the developer care to give us your thoughts on what you have in mind there?
Well, the issue of security and marketability are issues that we have to work out. We envision that that actually is private. There is a gate there. That does not, you can come up the stairs and down the stairs, but unless you're a resident, you would not come through that gate. Now, there is probably a way to make it work, that there could be public access through there. But we've got stairs on both ends of the site here. And there are also other ramped opportunities, other locations where you can come down into the creek. So that's something that will be, we'll have to have some further discussion with staff and based on the comments that we received today. But as we've got it now, the sidewalk that's against the creek, right by those units, is secured.
Okay.
And I think that's, that makes, we've got patios and balconies and so forth that overlook the creek. And there are plenty of opportunities around the creek that you can enjoy the creek. If you remember that one section in particular, you've got a fairly foreboding wall on that side of the creek. The other opens up completely to the public and to the parking that's up there.
Oh, yeah, I'm real familiar with this area. And I know that this, in my opinion, is not a very utilized space by the public in this step area. But I could be wrong, but just every time I've been there, it's, other parts of the park are being used and not so much this, this particular center part. But I just want to get your thoughts on it, and thank you.
Commissioner Fleming?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I just had two or three questions. One is management. How's it going to be onsite management of that? Is that the plan?
I'm going to let Jim answer that question. I'm not certain.
Yes, there will be onsite management on. The management company that is a partner of ours is Sunrise Management Company. They manage thousands of units here in San Diego and Vista also. And they will have, there will be a person onsite, if that's correct.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. And the other thing is, one of the things I noticed is the big majority of these are studio or one-bedroom. There's a few two-bedroom, but mostly it's, it seems to me probably going to be geared to young people that would, the urban environment of the downtown that we're developing might be perfectly in line with what they need.
I think that's the thought. I really do think it's going to be a younger demographic that will find this appealing.
And...
Or maybe people like me.
The park was just mentioned, you know, about that. And you said you have stairs on each end. Is there a walk area right next to that retainer wall that makes it easily accessible to the public? Not from y'all's point of view, but from John Doe's point of view, the Vista resident?
You can walk on either side of the creek. Yes, you can.
Okay, there is a walk area through there, right next to that, okay. So that's good. And then, let's see, you were talking about the shared parking, and there was a comment made earlier about the people having to park, visiting over here in Site J and walking all the way to the other end. Right next to the eastern end is a section of parking that is, unless it's a big, big movie, doesn't get used. There's almost never anybody there. So just to point that out. And that's the comments I had about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Looney, please.
Thank you. Couple of questions. I want to make sure I understand the floor plan. Looking at the ground level, as I come into those garage spaces, is there a means by which to access a living unit from that garage? So I'm having the car...
No, you have to walk, you have to go out, and all the entrances, all the units face the creek. I mean, if you live here, you're going to experience the creek. These buildings are not very big buildings. They really are, there's one longer building. We've got to cut through on that longer building. The other buildings, you would come out, and there are only like three or four cars that you'd walk past to get around to the front. But the intent is to get people out to the creek. You have that experience every day. I mean, and maybe it'd be nice if you were on the ground level to just walk right into your car from the garage and not look out. But that's not the way this has been planned.
Okay. Coming back to an issue of parking, I think it's one of the most unique sites where you have so much parking surrounding you that's currently never used or very seldom used. And so I really, I don't see an issue with the parking, the number of parking spaces.
That's one of the other sweet things about this site. The property that was pointed out, that triangular parking lot, probably for Star Wars, it was full, you know, when it opened. But every single aerial I've seen, it's, there's one or two cars in it, and there's, you know, 70 spaces right there, potentially. And it's immediately adjacent to a lot of the units that are in this development. So I think that would work out very well. And then you've got also the parking that's in between the wave and the creek that is underutilized as well. And that's just a short trip across that bridge, which is a good experience.
Could you explain a little bit further the concept of the food truck vending space? How that functions? I mean, I like the idea that you've utilized that bridge because that's kind of that experience. It's unfortunate that more of the residents couldn't experience that bridge, but I think as they get out into the community, they can. But I'm curious to hear your approach or your...
We're still tossing out ideas on what can go there. There was originally, if you remember that original site plan that we had, there's a little tiny retail space there. Nobody knew what that was going to be. I mean, there are ideas now that are more viable, such as food trucks, where if you provide an opportunity, where gourmet food truck to pull up or something, that could work out. There are also some other types of uses. We've been tossing that around. We would like to activate it. If you recall, there, well, you can see it right there. There's a large green component there. We can still accommodate, we think we can accommodate the parking. A little parklet there that's, you know, overlooks the park as well as, you know, what's going down below. But we're still trying to figure out what we can use to activate it. The food truck was one idea. We'll probably come back with some other ideas as well for what might work. You know, a little coffee shop or kiosk or some other things.
I'll just be mindful, too, that the history of that parcel didn't seem to draw food establishments. So if I have that food truck there, it works great when there is a great movie showing. But I think that's, that's going to be an interesting piece of dirt to deal with.
Well, that may have been what was behind the food truck because if it doesn't work, it just drives off, so.
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
My question was answered, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosser, please.
My question is for Mr. Reynolds, but don't go away.
Mr. Reynolds, does Silvergate do just residential construction? Or have you done mixed-use projects with ground-floor commercial?
We have done all of that, yes.
Okay. I have a major concern about the project. I think this is one of the, an excellent opportunity for a true mixed-use at the minimum, live-work units that would front on the street. The project basically turns us back. Its orientation is to the creek. I think it would be better for the city if the orientation was to the, to the street and you had ground-floor commercial along the street. So I wanted to know if you had that, if you have that capability. People who have come here before, before the commission in mixed-use projects don't have experience in mixed-use. And so that's a major concern of mine, and I wanted to make sure that, find out if you had the experience to do that.
We've had a lot of experience doing that. Again, we've studied that. Richard Benson and I have built projects with that exactly in it. And here, it just won't work. There's not the traffic, there's not, it's the wrong location, and it's...
Being located between the theater and Fraser Farms? You don't think that there's enough?
Well, it's not located between the theater and Fraser Farms. It's located next to Fraser Farms over there, where there's a, where there's an alley going back and forth, small alley going back and forth. It's not the right place. It hasn't been leased in 15 years.
Yeah, I know. And we just lost our two restaurants. But I understood we lost our restaurants because the property owner was up in the rent.
We need the people there to activate the retail.
Yeah.
And this activates the retail. And that's our, and we really, you know, I've probably built more mixed-use projects downtown San Diego than anybody. And so we've looked at this real hard. We would love to build mixed-use. That's our thing. But this is not the place to do it. This is a place where the retail's already there. Let's get some people in the seats so they, the businesses stay open.
Okay. I think that answers my questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a couple of speaker slips, and we'll go from there.
Okay, great.
First one, Nikki Hobson, please. Come forward, state your name, give your address.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Nikki Hobson, and I live at 2070 Ridgeline Avenue in Vista. Been here for 25 years, and I love Vista. In looking at the small images on my computer, I couldn't tell a lot about the project. But one thing I think I should mention is, this is a really important project for this area. And unfortunately, people don't know anything about it. Somehow, the word didn't get out that this was being planned, that there's an opportunity to come and address the planning commissions about it. And I don't know if there's any reasonable way to change our notification system or how to publicize projects like this. But I would certainly encourage you to think about it if you can. Okay, and my first impression is that this is a really dense project. It's got a lot of people crammed into a very small space. And it's going to have a tremendous impact on an already difficult problem of traffic and, as you have discussed at length, parking. And I don't know, you know, if there's an answer. I don't quite understand the parking situation, but it seems like there's not enough parking planned for. And my personal preference is that we should be building condos and townhomes in Vista. We have a ton of apartments, and this particular area is really saturated by apartments with plenty of vacancies available. For instance, the new Avalon project is still half-empty and with the owner offering some very nice incentives for people to come and rent there, and they're just not doing it. And then there's another project, which the Silver... there's another project, which the Silvergate people are planning, right across the street from Avalon. That's another 100 apartments that are going to be built there. So, I'm not sure we need more apartments. We need condos and townhomes. And the main reason for that is that people who own their homes take a greater interest in the community. They put down roots, they care about what happens. Whereas renters, and bless their hearts, I have nothing against renters, but they have a very short time horizon, and they have very little interest in, in the future of, of the community. So I would encourage you to, to look for condo developments rather than apartments. And I guess, to my view, the most serious flaw of, of this project is the way that it is screening the public away from the park, both physically and visually. I mean, if you look at it, it just, it wraps around that area, and I suppose if you really, really want to get there, you can. But there's, it doesn't offer much encouragement for the public to come there. And I would love to see somehow easier access for the, for the public. And we don't want to fence the public out of the public's park. I also, the contemporary architecture is not my favorite. It's probably adequate, but I don't think it especially represents Vista. You know, we're Rancho, Adobe, Spanish land-grant community, and I think the architecture should reflect that heritage. And thank you very much for this opportunity.
Ms. Hobson, how did you find out about this project?
A friend of mine apparently went online, found it, and let me know, and let me know about it. But, you know, this idea that, that, that only people 500 feet around a project are going to be impacted, is just erroneous. It's, it affects the whole community, especially a project like this.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Steve Barran, please. Hi. Please state your name, give your address.
Steve Barran, 1182 Casa Bonita Way. The architect said something about preserving open space. I don't see it being preserved. I see it being a three-and-a-half-story albatross. He said something about .25 spaces. .25 spaces of what? What was he referring to? The building code calls for, I believe, Patsy, 2.3, right?
May I answer?
Oh, please.
2.3 is from the multifamily zone, the parking ratio. The downtown-specific plan has a different parking ratio for studios, one-bedroom and two-bedrooms. The .25 refers to the requirement for gas space per unit. That's what Richard was referring to.
So I count 55 beds roughly in that place, and they've got 60-something parking spaces? That math doesn't work out.
Again, there is specific requirements. Would you like me to go over the requirements for the-
While she's looking that up, I tend to walk my dogs in that park and shop at Fraser Farms. The last thing I kind of want somebody doing is from three stories, watching what I'm doing, looking at me out of their balcony or whatever. Just kind of ruins the private moment of having a nice, quiet park to go and spend time by myself in.
Okay. So, basically, the downtown-specific plan calls for a studio to have one space per unit, plus .25 guest space per unit, so 1.25. A one-bedroom would be required to have 1.25, so the same rate. And a two-bedroom will be required to have a 2.25. So, there are four studios, 23 one-bedroom, if I remember correctly, and 14 two-bedrooms. And if you do the math, and add them all up together, it would come out to a total of 65.25, which would be rounded up to 66.
And again, we're looking at this corporation coming and looking at building apartments, like my neighbor said, you know, we need homes, we need ownership, we need people that are vested in the community. That's what I would hope you guys would plan for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Kramer? When I have the opportunity, I just wanted to clarify on the public notification. Is this the right time?
Sure.
I just wanted to, I know that it was mentioned about the 500 feet within the project boundaries for owners and occupants to be notified. We have also made efforts to make sure that folks that are interested in learning about projects that are coming through the city, as such as early design reviews or discretionary public hearing items, they can sign up on, on the city's homepage to receive notifications of such meetings taking place. There, to my knowledge, there is over 1,000 people that have signed up. So we also make an effort to send out notices on these early design review meetings and public hearing items to those folks as well. So there's an e-blast that goes out basically at the same time. Also, the site gets posted with a notification on the site itself physically, so, in case people are driving by or walking by. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cho. Please, excuse me, state your name and give your address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pat Lenahan, and my address is 12631 Vista Panorama in Santa Ana. My family owns the Staples Building in the center there, and that's the only reason that I'm here. I received a notice here just a week ago, and I came here more as a fact-finding mission. I'm not pro, I'm not against, but there are some points that I thought would be best to be brought up, so that everybody's on the same page. I don't know if during the time that this property's been owned by my family since 2004, if something has changed in the requirements of the center. I brought with me the recorded parking reciprocal easement agreement, and also with the development disposition and development agreement between the city and the original developer. And from what I'm reading, it specifically excludes residential and apartments on that property. I don't know if something's changed during the course of these 11 years, or 12 years now. That I thought I would bring up, because it specifically excludes them. Part of it also addresses parking requirements. Each, everything is to be retail, or, you know, the water park, or the theaters, but everything was originally designed to be retail. So now we're introducing apartments and residential into that, something that seems like it's specifically excluded. I understand that as part of the development, originally, the city obtained or had access, or I don't know how it obtained, but these lots are part of the cities, they are owned by the city. I assume that I'm correct. But my question on that was, are they being, is this property being sold, is it being leased? Is there a conflict of interest in pursuing this specific development? When the original design was for fast-food restaurants, which also incorporates the parking issue. Every one of these retail had a specific parking requirement, four-and-a-half or five spaces per 1,000 square feet. So now, we're changing that because of a different type of use. We're changing the parking requirements. We talk of sharing, there's lots of additional parking, we can go park over in front of Fraser Farms, it's all, nobody's using it. But that's not true. It is being used, it's heavily used. So, when you say you're going to park on somebody else's, it's reciprocal, agreed. But you have to provide for yourself first. It doesn't mean that I can go park all of my customers all over in front of Fraser Farms. It's reciprocal. So wherever the parking happens to show up, people can park there. They're in, they're out. So, number one, the numbers aren't going to come up, you know, if you took the square footages, of which I don't really know, but it's going to be much higher than the 66 or 7 spaces. So I want to bring that up. The other part is, I know that part of the benefit of having this is one of the amenities, so to speak, of the apartments, is the creek walk. So it's being sold as, these are, this is a nice amenity for people that are living there, for the creek walk. But it's not their creek walk, it's the city's creek walk. It's for everyone's use. As part of the Phase Two, where Staples is, we pay, as part of the original agreement, the development agreement, a portion of the maintenance of that city walk. So that portion is paid on an annual basis to maintain that space. That was the original agreement. We abide by that. So if this goes forward, is this development going to pay their share to lighten the load on everybody else that's been paying in all of these years to maintain that? So if they have so many square feet, are they going to pay their proportionate share? Also, the common area maintenance. Here, you're putting in a lot of usage of these people that are living there, which is fine. But who pays for the lighting, the landscaping, the security, the maintenance of the parking lots, which reciprocal, everybody uses, we all pay a proportionate share? Is that going to be incorporated into whatever agreement ultimately ends up happening? That's it.
Thank you, sir. It was quite enlightening. Cliff Kaiser, please.
Madam Chairperson, if I could respond to some of the-
That'd be great.
...issues that were raised. The property is currently owned by the successor agency to the Vista Redevelopment Agency. As you know, the redevelopment agency was dissolved. Originally, this was a redevelopment project. There was an expectation that the land would be used for restaurant use. That proved to be not a viable option. And that was true even during the period when the redevelopment agency was in existence and was able to provide financial incentives. With the dissolution of redevelopment, there's no ability to provide financial incentives. And beyond that, it's proved to be not viable in the first instance. In the event that there is, there would be a contribution towards the cost of maintaining the creek walk, so a fair share would be paid. And there'd be a need, of course, to update the CCNRs to accommodate the, the changed use.
There was also some question regarding the original plan, so that there could not be any residential?
I, I think that's where there'd be a need to update the CCNRs. I think, you know, maybe not everybody's aware of that, potentially, potential update, but I think that most people are.
Okay.
Most interested parties.
All right. Thank you so much. Sorry, Mr. Kaiser, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Actually, there's a lot of attractive things and, and some negative things about this, in my opinion. And given only three minutes, you, some of you know me, I tend to be blunt sometimes, so, but in reality, I respect the people that have come before us, and the developers, and their interest in developing, and the architect, and, and his experience. But frankly, I would have to question the designer or the architect's wisdom in, in putting restaurant pads there, and coming to, back to us 18 years later and saying, "It doesn't work." Okay? So now he's coming to us and saying, "We've got a plan here." And are we going to come back here in five, 10, 15 years and say, "No, I'm sorry, it didn't work?" And, and at the same time, I would also ask, "Well, what's the hurry?" I mean, this property is owned by the city, the successor agency, and there's really not any urgency to get rid of this property, although it has been sold, I believe. But let's make sure that we develop this for really the greater good of downtown Vista. Let's make this a great, really improved asset in the downtown. We've got great things happening in the downtown. Let's make sure we're not rushing in there with some cheap apartments. Parking is a concern. I don't have a problem with the shared apart, shared parking. I do agree that the, the parking over there by the Cricorian and by the wave, it can be very well shared. But at the same time, I don't agree with the parking standards. It says, if you've got all these two-bedroom apartments, that you only need one or one-and-a-half car spaces for that. You really need a lot more. And if you're going to share those, that's okay, but make sure we're, we're putting realistic parking numbers in place when we put this together. And I agree with Nikki Hobson, contemporary architecture is, just doesn't fit here in Vista, you know, and forgive me to the architecture and, and to the designers of City Hall, the City Hall doesn't fit here in Vista. And it doesn't fit there for the apartments in, in, in the, in the Cricorian area. Of course, I'd be interested in the traffic study that comes out as to how this is all going to fit in. And if you must, build high-density housing in here, I also agree with some of the other speakers, let's make it condominiums, not apartments. Let's put people that have a vested interest in investment in Vista, in investment in, in where they live, and perhaps even go with luxury apartments, or luxury condominiums. And, and I think some of you probably already know that smart growth is a four-letter word. You know, it's, it just doesn't work. It, it's not something that we want. Smart growth means cheap, close to transit, let's get low-income people in here and get them out of here, so they can go to work. I appreciate the struggles that low-income people go through, but we need to invest in the downtown. I don't really like the tuck-under garages, I'd rather have garages with garage doors. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Val Brown?
Hello.
Hi, Val. Can you give us your address, please?
Sure. 562 Joe Pill Drive. Thank you for this opportunity. Patsy, I do appreciate the efforts that you did go through. However, I found out about this meeting from John Conley. I called him about something else I just found out about yesterday. So, this is a very, very important project. The village is the heart of our community, and this project is going to change the look and the feel of our community. I'm concerned that this is the second project proposed by this developer that is blocking the public off from a public open space. The Breeze Hill Apartments will block our community off from our one little six-acre park. And these buildings have their back, as was stated, I believe, by one of the commissioners, to the community. And they're very plain. I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said. I'm in agreement with that. I don't want to waste your time. In preparing for this meeting tonight, I found this article from 2001. And it said that there was a tour of the creek walk, which largely unseen from the road and will likely be finished by December. Considered the focal point of the project, the creekside promenade will be the cornerstone of Vista's downtown redevelopment project, with some of the most lucrative businesses within Vista Village slated to overlook the creek banks. I think Cliff made a really good point. You know, why were these pads ever designated for retail if that wasn't going to work? And now, a, a private developer will be benefiting from a public space. And I agree that it's going to be difficult to get down there. I would hope that whatever goes in there makes it easier to use that space. And visually, we are going to be completely blocked off from seeing this. The parking is a very real issue. My comment is anecdotal, but I think realistic. After a long day at work, 6:00 PM, Fraser Farms, need to pick up a few things to finish dinner, we need to park in the dirt. There is no parking. And so while there may be parking that's not being used, it is the parking in the right place. Crunch has really, really filled up that parking lot at all times. And so I asked the checker, I said, "Hey," I said, "Is it always like this at 6:00 o'clock?" And he goes, "At 6:00 o'clock? It's like this all day." So, there may be the parking, but is it in the right place? Density, 32 units per acre. Avalon is 30 units per acre, and in the same height range, has completely walled us off from our little shopping center that we had there. Visually, you can't even see it anymore. The backs, modern design. That traffic in that area, would agree, the comments about the trash opening out into an area that's already busy. I just don't really think that that's appropriate. But it seems like what should have been a public space with restaurants, when you look at the original pads, there is open space in between where you can actually see. So, I just think that we deserve better. I'd like to see if we can- And this is a public treasure. So I really appreciate your consideration. Hope we can have a larger discussion about this with more of the community when they know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Dennis Bergren, please.
Hello. My name's Dennis Bergren. I live at 1134 Casa Benita Way. I've lived there since 1988. I've seen the city of Vista basically explode in that time period. Personally, I think the density of this project is a little too high. One of the overhead slides showed the Wave Water Park and this property and just a little bit of view of Fraser Farms. Every single parking place over there was consumed. During the daytime, Fraser Farms does a terrific business, and there is no parking there. If you come over in the evening to have dinner, like at Chili's, you're lucky if you can park at Staples because the parking is consumed. In the summertime, the Wave Water Park runs. And when school is in, you have Vista High School and Rancho Buena Vista High School that the swim teams and the water polo teams utilize the Wave Water Park pool. They used to use Lincoln, but now they use this one. And when those meats are going, there is no parking adjacent to that property all along that area. It's totally filled with spectators, parents, family, and friends. The only available parking that I've ever seen in this area is that one little niche in the upper right-hand corner. Other than that, parking is atrocious in that area at some points of time. And again, I think traffic's going to be a nightmare trying to get in and out. I appreciate the work that you folks do. It's a job that I'm sure is pretty tough when you have to try to negotiate things with everybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other speaker slips. Anybody wish to put one in? And, okay. All right. So now we're to the Commissioners' comments. Is anyone, any of the Commissioners that would like to discuss the site design and the grading? Commissioner Jackal.
Thank you. I really agree with a lot of the comments that have been made. I think this is way too dense. I think we have more than enough apartments. I think condominiums would be much more appropriate. I feel as though with a three-story design, they're putting the Creek Walk in a canyon. They're just burying it. And I am desperately concerned about having the public access from the Fraser Farms side down those steps into the Creek Walk itself. I think you cannot block the public from a public amenity. They just can't do that. And I guess that's all I have to say about that.
Commissioner Fleming, site design and grading.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Jackal about the not being, not blocking the public from their own parks. You can't stop us, you know, put barricades up that's going to keep the public out of the public's park. I don't like the idea of that being used as part of the amenities that you would be providing as an offset for amenities. So the biggest thing is, I tend to agree with most of what everybody was saying, is I don't like the idea of strictly apartments there. I would much prefer that layout to be, as was said earlier by one of the Commissioners, by Commissioner Rosler, the mixed-use possibly. If you're going to have something there and you have to put a part, some sort of living arrangements, make it a mixed-use, make it some sort of townhouses, something less dense. I just, I'm just not happy with the layout there. Thank you.
Commissioner Rosler, please.
I, on the other hand, I'm okay with the density. We're within a quarter-mile of the transit station. I think if we're going to do residential, that it's appropriate, the density is appropriate. I would like to see, though, ground-floor commercial. And I'm thinking if there isn't the demand for a ground-floor commercial, for a commercial use, at least a live-work unit where they would have an office or a commercial space downstairs and their living quarters above it, and a townhouse-type arrangement, and then have the rest of the density and stack flats if they want. I think, I think there's an opportunity here for that, and I would like to, I'd like to see that. Mentioned, okay, yes. I, and, oh, I'm sorry. The public access. That walkway down from Fraser Farms is a major access down in the park, and I think it needs to be open to the public. So.
Commissioner Garretson.
His last comment basically covered what I was going to say, and that is public access to the park from all areas. You know, anytime that I've walked over there before a movie, after a movie, you know, it's a great asset for the city. And if we're going to put fences and keep the public from having access to that, then I would have a major problem with it.
Thank you. My comments on the site design and the grading aspect of it, I actually, I like the design. I like the idea of, from your, your unit, though I wish it to be a condo or a townhouse, that you were looking out towards the park. It kind of reminds me of hotels and things that are lining up by a harbor. So the balconies of the apartments are facing the harbor, they're facing the boats, and then the backside is, you know, the way to get in. So that portion of it I really like, but I do, I really would wish that they could be condos or townhouses so that there is that attachment to the community, you know, where renters don't tend to have that, that kind of attachment. So those are my comments with the site design and grading. We'll now go on to architecture. Does any of the Commissioners have a comment on the architecture? Commissioner Jackal.
I'm wondering what the covered parking is going to look like, because we don't have any representation of that. And again, here we have not four-sided architecture, but we have two-sided architecture. The front and the back have the architectural details, and the sides of the building, which are going to be visible, are just blank. I do kind of like the standing seam roofs, but...
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to comment that I do like this architecture, and I, I think it does a good job of fitting in with the existing facilities in the neighborhood, Fraser Farms, and, and I think it fits in really well on color scheme and style-wise with, with what's already existing in the area.
Commissioner Rosler.
I agree with Commissioner Carroll.
Commissioner Looney.
I think on the exterior elevations, particularly on the garage side, there needs to be additional delineation. It's really a three-story wall with very little architectural delineation. There is some, but it's a little, it just needs to be embellished a little bit more. On the exterior elevations, I don't know if it's an issue of just a, of a concept drawing, but the very, the roof edge seems to be about two inches thick, and it might look better if you ended up with a thicker edge from your, your roof assembly down to your rafters. It just, it looks, it looks thin. And I brought this up earlier, the access to the front door where I'm having to walk around the building. I don't see that as a problem on some of the smaller buildings, but particularly on Building One, I've got to walk quite a ways to get to my front door. Maybe an issue, may not be, but I think it's something that should be considered. And I appreciate the photographs of the Krikorian Center, what was the Krikorian Center, because I looked at the exterior elevations and I couldn't figure out why in the world do we have this blue, three-shaded blue cornice detail? But after seeing those pictures, I was reminded that you're carrying that same type of detail. And I think that's a strong point. It really is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Looney. Commissioner Fleming, please.
Thank you. I agree the, I like the look of the, generally look of the architecture. I like the overhangs of the roof. I think that's an attractive shading area that works really well there. And I just wanted to agree that, I mean, I like, if it has to be apartments and stuff like that, I'd, I like the looks of what you've designed.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. Commissioner Jackal.
Thank you. To add to the discussion about entrance from the garages, I'm thinking, here I am carrying heavy sacks of groceries and I have to walk all this way around. So access would be, I think, a very good thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackal. Commissioner Garretson, please.
I would wonder what, what the view is going to be like from those houses to the east. I don't see the arc, the elevation there. In other words, are these apartments going to be higher than the houses to the east on the other side of that driveway? And what, what kind of view are they going to have of the roof? What's it going to look like? Those people have been there a while. So I would, I would hope that the roof line is not going to be just an ugly sight for them. So that would be a concern that I would have moving forward.
Next is parking and traffic. Commissioner Rosler.
I was saving my comment on direct access from the garage to the unit for parking, but I agree with what the other Commissioners have said. The, the two parking spaces that Commissioner Carroll brought up earlier need to be addressed. There isn't sufficient turnaround area for people parking there to leave. And, and there has to be a parking management plan. I'm okay with using, with the easement and using the off-site spaces for, for spillover. But there has to be a parking management plan, and there has to be a management plan of the units. You've heard from the neighborhood concerns about other projects. Those other projects haven't been managed well. They're allowing more than one family to, to live in the apartments, or they're allowing their tenants to store stuff in their garage and not use their garage. So you're going to have to show us how you're going to address that problem, requiring people to park in their garage or have their garage available for parking and not have densification or, bad word, and over, too many people living in the apartment. Okay? You're going to, that's going to be key to address this condition or this concern about condos and ownership. If the apartments that we have in town that are well-maintained, we don't have these concerns. Where they haven't been well-maintained, people come and complain to us. So management of the apartment project is key. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosler. Commissioner Garretson, please.
I was just going to talk about the management plan, so he's covered it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. My preference would be to see the 66-stall requirement be met, what I consider to be onsite and not count the, what I consider to be non-contiguous off-site parcel J. It's nice that those are there and then someone's going to be able to park there, but I don't really see that. Well, my preference would be to, for the 66 spaces to be met on parcels one and two.
Thank you. Commissioner Looney, please.
On the traffic, I've been to Fraser Farms when it's hard to get into the parking lot, especially south, just on that entrance into the parking area, just south of the, of Fraser Farms. I know there's a light further to the west, but you've got a lot of people coming out of Fraser Farms that cross that drive. And if we're increasing the traffic loads, you, the pedestrian or the customers from Fraser Farms are going to have to be a lot more aware when they cross that street. I don't know how that issue is resolved, but it's an issue that I think at least needs to be looked at. I don't know if, if we put a light at that other drive, I think that can cause some difficulties, but it's certainly going to change the dynamics of traffic flow on that parking area.
My feeling on the parking for this project is way inadequate. Fraser, and I am habitually, Saturday morning at 8:00, and you can get a parking spot, but if I happen to stop by between 1:00 and 2:00 in the afternoon or 6:00, like Ms. Brown commented on, the parking is horrendous. I've, sorry, sir, had to park over at your Staples a few times to get into Fraser. And the parking around the Wave Water Park, both sides of the street, especially when the wave is open from May to September, but it's full. And a monthly massage envy person, I have to use that little triangular lot because I can't get in to park on the other side. So the parking for this complex, whatever it will be, has, has got to be more, more than what the city requirements are for a mixed-use in this area because it is really going to impact that, all of the rest of that. So those are my comments. Landscaping and amenities, any of the Commissioners have any comments on that?
Commissioner Jackal?
Just, we need a landscape plan.
Commissioner Fleming?
Thank you. Just the, looking at the amenity, at the things that you had talked about with the bocce ball and things of that nature down that end, that's, that area, that's, that's nice. I like the food truck idea there. And is, that will be fully available to the citizens of Vista, or is that strictly going to be for the people there? That's, that would, that would have to be for everybody. Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. As far as amenities, I like what they've done on the west end, but there's, I don't really see anything on the east end, and I think that's not enough for the amount of units that are being proposed to just have one. Maybe there's something with the clubhouse that we didn't go into, that maybe you could talk a little bit about that to enlighten us.
The central area between Buildings Two and Three?
Come on up to the mic, please. To the mic, please.
The central area between Buildings Two and Three by the clubhouse, that's the larger sort of outdoor space. There's a barbecue area, outdoor, you know, hangout space, fire pit, that kind of thing. So that was kind of the central gathering space. In between the buildings, there's the little triangular pieces. Again, that would be more of a little passive lookout space into the park, and it's also helping us deal with our stormwater. We wanted to deal with all of our stormwater onsite.
We wanted to deal with all of our stormwater onsite and, and complement what's happening with the River Park. Okay, thanks. Yeah, if you could just provide us with a little more plan information on that for, on the next, on a landscape plan that we could see that for ourselves better. Yeah, I think it just needs another enlargement. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments to the applicant and/or staff? Commissioner Rossler?
I'm sorry, I probably should have talked about this under architecture. I want to make sure that each ground floor, ground floor unit has a private patio outside the front door. And then on the, on the balconies, the door opens out into the balcony, and my thought was that that limits the usable space out there. So I would like to, my thought was to have the door open inward to the, to the unit, but that may screw up the floor plan, so that, that's a concern for me. Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Looney, please.
This is a question for Ms. Chow. The street that comes off of Vista Village comes by the water park and then by Fraser Farms, is that all city-owned, or is any of that drive privately owned?
That's all considered to be private access. I mean, as far as, it's not a public street. Wave Drive up to the cul-de-sac, to the bulb, I should say, to the circular portion there in the middle, it's, part of that is public, but as you move into the center, it's all private drive, internal private to the center.
So the owners are Fraser Farms and Staples, and then currently they pay the maintenance cost for the, for the paving, for that street?
I, I'm not sure about that as far as how the arrangements are, as far as who's paying for maintenance, or if it's, I know it's covered under the reciprocal easement agreement as far as vehicular access, so that everybody has the ability to move internally and freely through those private drives. But as far as maintenance, I'm not sure. We would have to look into that and how that's done.
So whoever develops the property, in whatever manner it is developed, they then would be contributors to the maintenance of that drive?
I would assume so, but again, I don't have a for sure answer on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
Yes, I have a question on safety of the people living there when you have parking spots on both sides of where they're going to walk, plus at the end. And I don't know how much space, and I know we run into this in parking lots in every commercial building in the world, but that's a dead end. And you're going to have everybody trying to turn, trying to pull out of there, plus when people are exiting their garages, they're going to have to walk behind all of those garages. So I, I don't know how you resolve that, but you have, you could have 22 people parking at the same time and exiting their garages trying to get over to their apartments. So I would be concerned about the safety.
Ms. Chow and the applicant Pathfinder, Silvergate, did you get sufficient information from us?
I have jotted down comments based on everything that you guys have said. I appreciate that. I just wanted to come back to Commissioner Carroll's comment earlier about the setback, the 15-foot, and it does appear that portion of the corners on that Building One is encroaching, so we'll just have to look at that and look at those particular issues as we move forward.
Thank you. Yeah, especially since we're talking about that being one of the access points across that nice bridge, and, and to really push that building up and pinch it off is, you know, could be a problem. It's just, you know, if anything, we'd like that to be a little bit more open there to invite the public.
That's it for our design review. Thank you very much for your comments. We'll see you again when it comes back to us. All right. So moving on with our agenda, agenda, excuse me, Commission Staff Discussion, Council Action and Reports.
Just wanted to make, excuse me. Gentlemen, can you move the, the meeting out? Thank you. Would we be having a meeting on January the 19th? I'm planning to bring, before you, a discussion on the parking code update. So we'll be having a community discussion meeting workshop, kind of an open forum, so that we can talk about parking code and perhaps talk about the handicap issues and all the stuff that's been brought up related to parking. So it should be an interesting discussion. That would be January the 19th, correct? The consultant will be here, so both, the consultant and myself will be here, and so hopefully we'll have a good dialogue. And then I also wanted to mention that we received information about the League of California Cities, the Planning Commissioners Academy that's held every year. I know some of you have attended in the past, some of you have not had the opportunity yet. I would like to give the opportunity to those of the commissioners that have not had a chance to perhaps take a first, you know, opportunity to kind of attend this. It will be held from March 2nd through the 4th. It is in San Remo, in the Bay Area. And we do have unfortunately the deadline which is quickly approaching us, which is February the 2nd, in order to do registration and housing deadline. So if you do have an interest, if you can shoot me an email or let me know, I would appreciate it. Think about it. And you can also go on their website in order to see more about their sessions and what they're going to cover and so, but it's always very interesting. I've attended in the past and some of the commissioners have too, and I think it's always a good experience.
It's very, very worthwhile. So any of the commissioners that have not gone, I really encourage you to do so. Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, I'll second. I'll second that there are typically some worthwhile seminars and classes at, at those, at those things. I've been to a couple of them. Some of them are duds, but, but, you know, there's, it's worth it. So I almost brought this up during the agenda item, but it's, maybe it's going to be more of a question, but, you know, the general plan was modified and we have, we have a lot of mixed use, you know, mixed use designations now, and we're not really seeing any commercial, commercial uses being attached to this mixed use, this higher density, what I consider to be a high density, you know, in the theory that it's attached to a mixed use, attached to a commercial use. And, and I'm curious how many of these projects that have come forward in the last year or so, in this mixed use designation, designation have had a commercial component attached to them? I can't remember any.
The only one, the Passay of Santa Fe, has a little bit of the retail next to what will be the Linear Park, but that's the only one I can think of at the top of my head that has had that.
And the G8 project that?
The G8 project, that's true. Well, there will be the, the new project at that corner, or that whole block anyways, that will have a true mixed use, or plan to be a true mixed use. So that's a good one. Yep.
Yeah, it's, you know, we hear this from the public all the time, you know, and, and the commission, this sentiment of homeownership, condos over apartments, and, you know, our role, as I see it on the commission, we're, we're pretty, we're very limited as to, as to what we can do about that. And, and this is more of a staff and council issue with this, what the general plan is right now, and if we're not, and if people in the public aren't happy with that, if they think it's, there's certain aspects that aren't working correctly, or if the pendulum has swung too far in one direction and it's time to rein it back. I mean, these, these, unfortunately, it's, I think it's hard for a lot of people, the public and, and the commission, to, to see that and to not really be able to do anything about it. And I'm just, you know, just, just blown off steam, I guess, or just pointing that out to, I think everybody realizes that, but it's hard, you know, when the public says, you know, we want condos here, and, and, well, that's not much as a commission can do about that.
That's true. Yep. Commissioner Garretson, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Is there any way that we could discuss that when that keeps coming up? I don't care if we have to discuss it every meeting, at least outline what we can do and can't do. So.
Commissioner Garretson, we have looked into the issue of whether it's practical or lawful to require condominiums rather than apartments where the two developments would be functionally and, you know, physically the same, except for one mandating it be owned. It, we, there are concerns about that. One is actually forcing the developer to complete the condominium process and then sell off. There's also the possibility that individuals could simply buy the condominiums and then rent them out, which definitely can happen. A condominium development with a high level of rental units might actually have certain problems that would exceed that of an apartment under single management. There's also issues regarding fair housing laws, and so I can't say that it would be an impossibility, but we have concerns about whether making that change would deliver what the commission or others would think it would do, and also the legality of actually mandating a condominium product when an apartment product would be physically the same. There's a certain affordable housing, not affordable, targeted, you know, we have a housing element that's supposed to serve different needing, different groups, and the condominium would, you know, preclude a certain level of moderate income targets, for instance, that need to be achieved. And I, I think the rentals already are quite high. I, I don't know if you know what the rentals would be, but they, it's, the, the rents are far from affordable to many people.
So Mr. Stone, would it be in the best interest of the audience, the community, when we are discussing these and we would like to see the condo thing, would it be in their best interest to keep in our forefront and maybe make the part of our discussion of, yeah, but if you've got 41 separate owners that you have to try to work with versus, you know, having this as an apartment complex with a really structured management system that, that you actually have more controls being an apartment than you would? Do you think that that would, and commissioners, do you think that would help? When Mr. Stone mentioned that, and I thought 41 children versus, you know, having an apartment where you have one manager that is running the whole thing versus 41 different, you know, people, made a lot of sense to me that maybe it is better to be an apartment than to be a condo. And I do understand the, and I would rather have owners than renters somewhat. Where am I going with that?
I, I wasn't suggesting that we, as a commission, try to change anyone's mind about what's, what's better for the community, or better for, for their neighborhood, or the pros and cons of, of the different aspects. It was mostly, it's, it was a zoning, it's a zoning item that I noticed that we've got this so-called mixed use that's not being utilized as, as mixed use. So it, it seems flawed to me. And so is there, is there an opportunity to, to do something with that, to require a certain percentage of, of commercial in a mixed use zoning? If that was the intent of the mixed use zonings, to have commercial in it, or was the, so, you know, as a commissioner, I, if a project comes before me, I feel like I, I, you know, if it, if it's meeting the, the city requirements, and it looks good, and if it's done all the right things, you know, I can't deny it just because it's apartments. It's, that's not, that's not my job. So.
My comment was, was more that we're hearing it from the audience saying, why not condos? Why not condos? And if, if we were saying back to them, a, a good management plan in apartments actually has more control over what's happening in the complex than if they were condos. That's kind of where I was going.
Almost as if, if we had a prepared statement, whatever we decide is that right position to take, but to inform the general public about parameters and what we think about and, you know, would, would clear up a lot of the, a lot of the discussion.
I mean, Commissioner Rossler brought it up today about a management plan, a parking management plan, and about apartments that are well-managed, we have little, we, as a community, have little trouble with versus those that are not well-managed. And then there's, you know, multiple families living in a one-bedroom apartment. So, you know, Commissioner Rossler started that, and, and so I'm wondering if we need to just keep that in our fore, you know, in front and mimic it back out.
One, one additional comment on if it does go condominium, there will be a homeowners' association, and that association will be responsible for managing the, the site. So I, I think my experience in, in doing this for 30 years, it, it all goes down to management of whatever residential development there is.
It would seem to me if we had some sort of prepared statement that we always provide when we have these discussions, it would serve the general public much better than everybody coming at it from a different perspective. And we're sitting here knowing what our limitations are, and knowing that a lot of the concerns they're going to express, it's out of our hands. So I think some sort of a prepared statement covering whatever these issues are could be very beneficial. I don't know what that statement would be, but.
Well, I think when the public speaks, comes up, they all want condominiums and, and don't want the apartments, and then they hear half of the commission say the same thing, and then the item is over, and it goes away, and it's apartments. The public must be thinking, what's going on here? We, we just said we didn't want apartments. Half the commission said they didn't want apartments, and so, yeah, something, you know, the, I don't know how to inform them that maybe their fight is with, on up the ladder, if they want to make some sort of change in that department.
Yeah, I, I think what happens is if it's a development where there is actually a site plan review, and it, there's, it would not be in appropriate condition, you know, since the, the use is lawful, the review process can't dictate which of the lawful uses are going to be selected by the developer for their private development. The, instead, really what the commission would have authority to address would be issues such as you are addressing. The design setbacks, you know, aesthetics, you know, the practical issues regarding the parking, for instance, all the, all those issues. the parking, for instance, all the, all those issues.
But what about the issue that Commissioner Carroll brought up about mixed use supposed to be mixed use, and we're not getting that?
I, I think that they brought up an, an interesting point, and my experience in the O'Ty Ranch shows me some of this. There are certain locations, especially around transit, where there is pedestrian activity, and that, you need that pedestrian activity for a true mixed use, ground floor, commercial. And this, this may, in my opinion, this was a, a good location for it because it was between Fraser Farms and the movie theater, two, two commercial anchors. So, I hate to state this, start this with staff, but maybe we need a review of our mixed use designated land and decide specifically, I, I'm, in my mind, downtown, South Santa Fe, definitely mixed use. You've got to have ground floor, and you can have residential above it. The one down on South Melrose, the property's far enough back off, the commercial was far enough back off the Melrose that it wasn't visible from, from the street, and the commercial died. So, perhaps that location wasn't appropriate, and going to residential without having to go back through a zone change is probably appropriate. So, maybe when we have one of our workshops in the future this year, maybe a review of mixed use would be appropriate at that, at that time.
That might be one reason that those two pads sit vacant for 15 years.
Yeah.
They, we wanted restaurants there, and I think that would have been great, but it didn't happen. And there's not that much traffic that actually goes between where Sinopolis and Fraser Farms there. People don't drive on that road as much as, I mean, occasionally they do, but it's not, it's not a road that, that is traveled a lot, I don't believe.
Be interesting to see what the traffic study says.
That would be, that would be something very interesting to see. Maybe we ought to have more traffic reports in, in what we get.
Well, I know, I try to avoid Fraser Farms, if I have to. If I'm not going to Fraser Farms, if I'm not going to Fraser Farms, I don't want to drive through that, even if it's a shortcut, just because of the traffic.
I think there are unintended consequences, perhaps, that we're facing with the mixed use and how that came about, because nobody's going to deny the fact that we're not really getting mixed use or true mixed use. And I think from the staff's perspective, it was more to provide flexibility when we implemented the zone in the way that we currently have it, so that we wouldn't lock in that picture that it has to be the retail of the first floor, and then office above it, or residential up above, or what have you. And it was mainly to provide the opportunity for the applicant or developer to come in and be perhaps more creative, but unfortunately, I think the unintended consequence is that we're getting all the residential projects coming through within these mixed use zones. So, I think from staff's perspective, perhaps there're not, there, there should be more discussion in thinking, you know, that we need to go back and reassess it, and perhaps it's not working the way we thought it would work, obviously, for whatever reasons how it's coming about, I guess, so. But it's a tough one, because it's either you, you constrict it to a certain recipe, and nobody buys it, or you open it up, and there's way too much choice, and you don't get what you wanted in the first place. So, anyways.
First step in the planning process is reevaluating the plan, so...
Correct. That's, that's a long-term process, and I think maybe that's the opportunity to do that.
Commissioner Looney, your lights on? Nothing? Commissioner Jackal?
No.
Commissioner Rosler?
Said enough.
Student commissioners? Neither? Okay. Commissioner Garretson?
A couple of meetings ago, Commissioner Jackal had talked about the potential of having balloons or something that would give us an idea of how high these buildings are relative to the rest of the community, and I would like to pursue that. I don't know if it's something that the city could do, we could have the developer do, or would it be legal if I had a, if I put four balloons up on private property, so I would know how high they are? And I was thinking specifically about the one behind Burger King, you know, sitting at Skybound, having a cup of coffee, trying to figure out how high that building would be, and is it going to so much tower over the community that it's going to be out of place? So, is that something we could do?
So, perhaps like a story poll that would identify, like usually see that in coastal zones because people are so concerned about height and what block is going to block their ocean view or what have you, but that's something that we can look into and see if that can be either part of the process. I'm not sure, but certainly we can...
I, I think that was a great idea. You look at this property, and if I'm an owner of one of those houses to the east, that's going to be one of the first things I'm going to want to know. Is this higher than my elevation, lower? And so, I think that would be a, a great community service, but certainly I would really appreciate it. Great idea.
And I'm thinking it would be a good idea, but it probably wouldn't be a good idea to early design review when we don't even have a developer who's bought into it yet.
Yeah, I agree. It might be something later on during the discretionary review process when it's a formal project.
Yeah.
But at this, but at the same time, even early design review, that's going to tell people, you know, how, how, how much do I support this? How much do I oppose it? And that would be a major determinant for me.
I've got to do that on my design reviews on my homes, and it's got to be done before the project design is reviewed. It has, the story polls have to be certified by a licensed surveyor that accurately represent the heights and the shapes of the proposed buildings. Yes, it's an additional cost, but it really shows the true picture of what is being proposed. And I think, as we've heard week after week after week, well, gee, I just heard about it. You put story polls up with the flags, you won't have any problem with the people knowing what's being proposed, and you'll see these seats filled. And so, yes, it's an additional expense for me to do a house, a five to six thousand foot house, it's going to run about $3,000, $4,000. But if we're talking about a multimillion dollar project, it's a very small investment by the developer to convey to the community what he's really proposing. So, I think that should be discussed further at staff level to see if we could get that implemented.
Oh, I think so, too. That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, especially if the developer, developer would pick up the cost.
Yeah, let me take that back, and then we'll discuss it at the staff level, and then we'll bring back something or our opinions on it, so.
Great. Any other comments?
When do we need these back?
Oh, when do we need the Form 700s back?
The next...
19th?
Oh, that's, okay.
Okay. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Oh. Two originals.
Two originals. Is that why there's two packs? Okay, two originals. Okay, thank you.